Probably. It's it's nuts.
I mean, this should be like a total nothing, right?
Absolutely. I also wanna, I also wanna see if we can get together and maybe call and get a meeting together with Kiki Valley. See, I still wanna talk to them. So. Okay. You guys ready? Here we go.
Ready.
Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, little after ten o'clock. We're gonna move right into consent agenda.
Approval of payroll, June eleventh and June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Approval of claims, June tenth, June twenty-fourth, July first, July eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Approval of minutes, June eighth and June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Waits and measures reports for May sixteenth to June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one filed.
Okay, then artistic services agreement, Laura.
Um, for Memorial Opera House, we've got Keith Woffler, Tyler Moore, Samuel Weber, and Emily Ramirez for artistic services agreement.
Okay, so those are the items on our consent agenda. Um, let's throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Getting into announcements now, we're accepting applications for the Airport Authority Board. Uh, the deadline will be August second, and it must be of a Republican affiliation. So that's our announcement for uh, applications for a board seat for the Airport Authority Board. We, uh, next up, we have Plan Commission Appointment. Uh, we had, uh, the Plan Commission has been pretty busy here uh, this year, uh, and we've been having some quorum issues with some people uh, not being able to attend, and so we've had someone move off, and uh, we're gonna be appointing them, uh, the Plan Commission person. Uh, today we have, it needs to be of a Republican uh, affiliation, and uh, I'm going to nominate Bobby Gilianna uh, to serve on the Plan Commission Appointment, so we can get him on the board and uh, start uh, getting these meetings quorummed up so we can keep moving forward.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Bobby Gilianna for Plan Commission Appointment. Any discussion? I would like to point out that Bobby right now serves on the Stormwater Management Board, and he will be moving off that board, and I, I do think that it's a natural progression for a public servant board appointment to work in the stormwater discipline. Now he can move up into the Plan Commission, and and he's had some stormwater uh, service on the board, so I think it's a great fit. And again, it's a civil person, a civilian of of the county, uh, who's sort of moving themselves up within the Plan Commission Board, so um, that's what, that's what we like to see with our public servants, so uh, for the, from the community. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up, uh, we have an ordinance, uh, amending ordinance zero four dash twenty-three, housing federal and Indiana Department of Correction prisoners in Porter County Jail. Um, this is second reading, uh, and Scott, you wanna just uh, give everybody the brief tutorial on what this is for again?
This ordinance modifies um, exactly how the money is distributed. That's based upon um, the jail receiving or asking for, and I believe being granted additional ten federal uh, prisoners. This is the mechanism that we utilize to ensure that the two budgets that are relying upon this revenue, one for the commissioners, one for the uh, jail itself, uh, remain at the same funding level that they had moving into this calendar year. The additional funding that would be potentially produced by the federal prisoners, uh, the additional uh, we had designated after talking with the council to, that would be the uh, money that would be available on a yearly basis for the uh, Sheriff's Department and the jails' motor vehicle needs. Uh, so this is moving in that direction.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions? This is second reading. Throw it to the floor.
So the, so the, the, the funds generated from the lease are going to now be spent on vehicles?
Well, they're going to, the original-
Or at least a portion of it.
Yeah, the additional portion will go to motor vehicles, and then that would potentially alleviate within the commissioner's budget where the uh, commissioners are purchasing the motor vehicles for the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, I'm all for that.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
On second reading.
On, yeah, yep, yep. Motion and second on second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a resolution to sell real property with assessed value less than fifteen thousand dollars. This, this is just a resolution, right?
Yeah, this is a, this is a um, part of the statute that allows a property that's being held by the commissioners, and the way the commissioners uh, gained uh, ownership of it was uh, through a certificate sale many years ago. Um, it's landlocked in between um, all the adjoining property owners. It's currently obviously assessed at zero, but this particular statute allows us to uh, put it out uh, for sale um, to the abutting property owners uh, that would be able to actually put this to good use. Um, it requires um, notice to the abutting property owners. The reason why this came to light was one of the property owners reached out wanting to purchase it from the commissioners. This is the most cost-effective manner of doing it because it is a different, it is a departure from the normal way uh, that the uh, commissioners would have to sell property. What makes this difference is it's less, the assessed value is worth less than fifteen thousand. It's surrounded by uh, other homeowners. Um, it's landlocked, and the highest and best use would be to one of those abutting property owners, so this resolution allows us to start the wheels on getting that noticed up and having the notice go out to the adjoining property owners, and then uh, with the opening bid of twenty-five hundred, and then whoever's the highest bid uh, would receive uh, whichever neighbor was the highest bid would receive the, a piece of property.
And we get it back on the tax rolls.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on a resolution to sell property uh, with assessed value less than fifteen thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a second amendment to the uh, health access program between Porter County Government and the Franciscan, working well. Is this our clinic, Scott?
It is, and this would take us out, no other changes to the original terms of the contract, and this would take us out to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so twenty-two. Any questions of uh, Attorney McClure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a second amendment to the health access program between Porter County Government and Franciscan, working well uh, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Um, just, just a little note on what we just passed. This uh, health access program is the county's uh, free clinic to our employees, and uh, I know when you hear the word free clinic and you're in government, some people might get a little bit worried about that, but actually, the clinic has really helped us drive our health insurance costs down uh, quite, um, quite a bit, almost four million dollars annually, uh, just by having a free clinic. So they're not going into the doctor's offices and emergency rooms all the time, which then holds our costs down on our claims. So it's, it's been a very good tool, and it's a very nice benefit for the people that work here, uh, but it is, it is returning. Uh, it is helping keep our insurance costs in check, which uh, is very important to us up here, so. Uh, and it's an excellent program, too, the whole policy, so. Uh, next up, uh, we're gonna go into Pulse Technology. This is an annual maintenance agreement uh, in the amount of one thousand thirty-five dollars, twenty-two cents for the mail machine and the scale in the admin building. That's in our postage office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have uh, an agreement between Porter County Government and Great News Life. Uh, this is an annual communication partnership agreement. I'm gonna have Kurt Ellis come up and uh, sorta give us a little bit of an, an outline of, of, of uh, what we're doing here with our partnership with uh, Northwest Indiana, Great News Life. Morning, Kurt.
Good morning. Um, as you know, last Wednesday I met with Chris Malmann from Great News Life, and we spent about three hours um, sitting and talking about this, and, and as I conveyed to you, I was skeptical about it. I mean, I'm skeptical, skeptical about everything, but we had a really-
That's true.
Decision, uh, discussion, and, and that evening, I, you know, I kinda looked at it in some different ways. I mean, number one, okay, to me, this is, this could be a cost-saving event for the county because some of our venues, like Opera House and Expo Center, have contracted with them in an annual contract of between three to five thousand, forty, forty-five hundred dollars each, whereas the cost for this package is eighty-five hundred dollars, and it would cover any department or venue that falls under the category of umbrella. We can feed them as many articles as we want every month, and they will publish them, and then they will cover up to twelve to fifteen events that we request that they cover, which I think would be good for our groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, those kinds of things. So, I mean, the cost factor there alone is, is pretty huge considering, too, the, the revenue challenges that our venues have right now.
Yep, yep.
Um, I, and, and to my head, the first thing I wanna get with them on is working with Opera House to sell out their events for the rest of this year, and with the Expo Center to really promote venue rentals because they need to build up their revenue streams again. Um, the, the other thing is that in these days, the, people aren't just relying on traditional media for their news. Nothing against traditional media, but more and more, especially younger people, are looking to more non-traditional media, media, and they're getting it through social media. And, and the, the, the numbers that they gave me regarding their exposure, they have thirty thousand Twitter followers. They have seventy-five thousand Facebook followers. They have three thousand LinkedIn members, which we don't even-
Subscribe.
Subscribe to. They have newsletter with um, in excess of five thousand dollar, five thousand um, subscribers, and their website gets about eighty-five thousand visits per month. So to me, this is a way that we can reach out to a wider audience and introduce them to Porter County Government. And I, I mean, a lot of people, younger people especially, don't understand even the difference between city and, and county and state governments. It gives us an opportunity to educate them more on what we are, what we do, and how we feel. So, I mean, all in all, to me, this is, this is a benefit. It's gonna help us drive visitors to not just our website, but Stormwater Site, to the Expo, to the Opera House, even to those like recycling-
Mm-hmm.
Having fall under this umbrella. And it would help drive followers to our Facebook pages. You know, we have, we have a healthy, like nineteen thousand followers on the Porter County Government page, which is pretty good, but it could be better.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, 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 the shelter has about thirty thousand followers, and I sure like to see the Porter County Government get up to that one, too.
Yeah.
And this is a method that we can drive people to our sites as well.
So I guess it's safe to say it's not only just uh, to market uh, our venues, um, but I, I see it as more of an outreach um, in, in, in transparency, in trying to let as many people know what we're doing up here.
Well, and that's been one of our goals all along, is to get-
Yep.
Reach out to people, let them know what we're doing, um, and, and as you said, transparency and communicate with, with the public. And this is a new way to do it, and to me, eighty-five hundred dollars is a pretty cost-effective way to do it.
Any other additional questions, Kurt?
My, uh, yeah, I have a few. Um, what, what do we do if, if the local newspapers come to us and they start asking, hey, they want, they want the same kind of program? They want the same kind of opportunity? What, what would we say?
We'll sit down and look at what they have to offer, and then I'll bring it to you and say, is this what you want to do?
Yeah, I just, fundamentally speaking, I just, I just, Kurt, I have a, I see the value in it with the Opera House and with the Expo Center. But I, fundamentally, I have a, I have an issue when um, this body or any other body in county government is controlling the news uh, with public tax dollars that the public is receiving. I just have a problem. I have an issue with that. Not saying that this board would ever do that, but we're not always gonna be setting that.
Right.
That, that's, that's the problem I have, and we spend tens of thousands of dollars a year in trying to promote what we're doing up here through our website, as you know, and through your position here in county government as well. I just, you know, I kinda scratch my head. If they have the, the numbers that they do, why don't we have similar numbers if we're investing as heavily as we invested up to this point?
Well, I mean, this, this to me is an amplifier of what we already get and pay. We, we build things on our website. We promote it through our Facebook page. Um, you know, during COVID, our, our numbers went to a point where we will never reach those again, but it helps us amplify what we are already putting there through the public on our website and on our Facebook pages. It, it gets us, it, 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 it's just a, a boost of what we are already doing and help us reach more people with that message. My hope is eventually it will, it will put people back to visiting our website where they can then explore other things on our website, and the same thing in growing the, the followers on our Facebook pages as well. So really, it's not changing what we're doing. It's amplifying what we're doing for the community.
Well, I, as I said, I, I don't have any, any issues at all with, I mean, it's, the, the world we live in is to, is to have a active, you know, Facebook page or an active website uh, where we, where residents can access some of the, the business in here without actually coming into the building. But I, I have an issue with us controlling the information about the business we're doing up here as a board. That I have an issue with. If that is, if that can be excluded out of this somehow, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with, because we're selling something at the Expo Center and at the Opera House, and we do need to advertise that. I get that. But that's not what we're really talking about here.
I don't see it as covering the news. It's more getting information out, um, kinda like we have already done on our Facebook page. I mean, this is how the highway department works when they plow. This is how the, how you, the steps you go through to adopt a pet at the animal shelter. Um, I don't think it takes away from what newspapers and journalists are doing. I mean, they, they're a huge part of successful government. I think they should work together.
Yeah, at the end of the day, social media is a tool, and we use it up here as a tool to drive people to our website. That's, that's, that's what we're trying to do up here, so the public can access our website mobile. They can do it mobily. They can do it static at a, at a, at a website, wherever they're at, um, that, cause that's where all of our information, and that's where all, you know, we, we spent before COVID, this county redid our entire website. It was done in-house. We saved a ton of money doing it in-house, and we opened it up just before COVID, which worked quite well for us, opening it up during COVID, because now we have a lot of data information and other things that we are now seeing who is getting on our website. What are the, what are the people wanting to see on the website? Where are they going? And if they're going to a certain department, well, maybe we need to enhance that information that we need to give to the people that are looking to that information. So this isn't really us trying to write the news and become a paper. This is basically a social media function that we're using to drive our community people or people outside maybe looking to come here, or I, I don't know. A lot of people look for, during COVID, we found out that people used our website for a lot of things. They were looking for golf courses. They're looking for liquor stores. They're looking for places to get their hair done. I mean, it was very, very crazy during COVID, but out of that, we got a lot of information and a lot of data, and, and I think that's what we're trying to do up here. That's what I was trying to say. This is more about outreach and trying to connect with the people in our community that wanna, that wanna use electronic communication as, as, as a method to stay informed with their government. That's all we're trying to do here, and, and we're, we're still doing it with public meetings. There's still public outreach. There's still all the public things that go on, but this is just one tool, so um, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Jim, but um, I think it's, I, I don't think that's what we're trying to do here, and I think the fact that we've been spending this type of money uh, with this company in our venues and things in the past and, past, past, and we've gotten uh, we've gotten a lot of, we've gotten a lot of good things out of that. I, I just, uh, it just seems odd to me that we're, we're, we're talking about this in the fashion that we are, but um, I guess that's just our different point of views, I guess.
Well, and I understand, I understand your position, Jeff, and, and Laura, but we're not talking about advertising our website. We're talking about feeding stories.
I wasn't talking about advertising our website. I was using, at saying that we're using social media for people to drive to, to, so they, if they wanna learn more about that particular subject, they can go to the website and they can learn more about it. That, that, that's not monetizing anything. That's driving people to content.
And, absolutely, absolutely, and I agree with that. That's not what we're all, that's not what we're really talking about here.
Well, I, I-
We're talking about feeding news stories.
Well-
Story, uh, information about decisions that we make up here as a board, so the public can see it.
Let me, let me maybe give you an example, okay? Over the past two or three months, okay, we have an online forum for the highway department, a request for, uh, a highway department request for students. And, and I'm copied on each one of those, rich as them, I get, I get copied. There have been several, more than several people complaining about roads and their subdivisions, okay? Now, we're allowed to embark on a plan to start addressing streets and subdivisions. So what, what I'm saying that we do is we have a page on our website that explains that, what we're doing, what subdivisions we are doing, how we are doing it, et cetera, and then I would post that on Facebook with a link to our webpage, and, and then we would reach out to public life and have them do the same. So what we're doing is we're getting ahead of the questions people are asking us and saying, look, yes, we're doing this, okay? This is when we're doing it. It's information. It's, this is not propaganda. It's information about what is being done to support our-
And we already issue press releases to the current newspapers.
To, yes, but we don't pay to have those press releases printed.
But we, I do put them on the website.
Yes. I have no, I have no issue of that going on our website. I have issue of spending public money to print information we feel the public needs to know to a so-called news source. I mean, where does that stop, honestly? I mean, the newspapers, every one of them would be, you know, if this is approved, could come to us at this point and say, okay, look, if you want us to show up at your meetings and, and, and report on the, on the, on the stories coming out of, out of county government or on your meetings, then we wanna be paid for it. That's not the media as, as I know it, and if that's where we've gone, this is where all this is going, and this is the future. God help us all, because you'll end up, you'll end up with a government that, that is not representing the best interests of the general public.
Oh, my God.
I, I just, I, I seriously have an issue with the totality of what we already spend to make sure that the information gets to the people and to, to turn around and, and send another, almost nine thousand dollars to a private company to also print it. I've got a problem with that because we're not selling anything up here. We're making decisions.
So you don't want us to market any more money to, for the venues or any of that? Cause that's all this is, Jim, is this is an extension.
Nope, I think I said exactly the opposite.
No, you're trying to Shanghai this whole thing and-
Oh, is that what I'm doing?
Yeah, that's what you're doing. You're making a point. We, we get what you're doing here. This, we're already doing this, so if you don't wanna expand-
We're doing it for the venues, Jeff.
That's what I'm saying.
We're not doing it with the decisions that we make up here.
That's, you read, okay. That's not, that's not what the intention of this agreement is.
That's not your intention. That's not my intention. It's not Laura's intention, but we're not always gonna be setting up here.
It's a one-year agreement. It, it's a one-year agreement.
Well, it'll, it'll, if it goes out, it won't have my signature.
I mean, it's like we, we, we passed this one-year agreement and, and the world's gonna come down on us. I just, I don't understand that.
I don't want this to blow up.
Well, it already has.
As, no, I, I don't think so. I don't think so. So if you, if you-
So you don't wanna do any marketing for the venues after we've just been-
No, I don't believe that's what I said at all.
Well, you're not, that's what this agreement's about, Jim. We, okay, we'll, we'll call the vote then. No sense in-
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. North County Annex, retainage pay apps. We got three here. They're all final payments. Can we do all the final payments at once?
You may.
Yep. We have Midwest Tile and Interiors. This is a retainage amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents for the flooring. This is the final payment. We have Pangier Corp., pay app number nineteen, in the amount of sixty, seventy-six thousand, one thirty-six, eighty-one for labor and materials. This is the final payment, and Circle R Electric, pay app nineteen, in the amount of forty-six thousand, five sixty-five, eighty for electrical, and this is final payment as well, and I'll throw that to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on North County Annex, retainage and pay apps. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. I believe that's the last of North County, isn't it? I'm pretty sure.
I think so.
It's getting real close.
Yeah, I think these are the last three, so that we can finally uh, uh, close that project out. Um, next up, Memorial Opera House. Scott McDonald. We have an additional appropriation fund, eighty-three hundred, forty-five point oh-two-five MOH IAC grant in the, in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, what's this for, Scott?
Good morning. Good morning.
How you doing?
I'm well. Yourself?
Good.
Good. So, uh, we receive funding from Indiana Arts Commission for arts operations support. This is something that we receive bi-annually. They increased our grant by a hundred and ninety-five dollars from what's already in the appropriation, so we just need to make sure that we have that so we can spend it. Um, also, we will be coming back next month because when we accepted the grant, they threw another three thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan funds in there, but the timing was just off, and we had to put that in another fund, so they don't co-mingle. Um, so that's what this is.
Okay.
You've been pulling in quite a few grants recently.
Yeah, about fifty thousand dollars, and uh, we're still waiting on SBA, the Shuttered Venues Organization Grant. We're in review hell. And um, we just noted, uh, we are applying for the National Endowment of the Arts for their art funds as well, which can be up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, all operational.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on an additional appropriation fund, eighty-three hundred, forty-five point zero-two-five MOH IAC grant in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Eric Serrano. Hi, Eric. He's our IT Director. This is for an Adams Remco, a copier. Uh, purchase amount thirty-nine hundred for the coroner's office, and then a service agreement to go with it. I think her copiers was pretty-
It's, it's an older one, and it's also more of a consumer model than a business model, so this will give us added features as well.
Oh, okay, good. All right, throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve. Can I do both?
Second with a question.
Yes.
What's the cost of the uh, one-year copier maintenance agreement?
Um, I believe it was in the ballpark of two hundred thousand dollars. If they're, or not two, two hundred-
Yeah, wait, I'll take that one.
They're billed, one, the, they bill them strangely. The color um, is billed quarterly, and then the black, the black ones bill quarterly, um, colors bill annually, um, and they go by a page count, and, but the, the coroner's office um, usually covers the maintenance.
Right.
So it's based on page counts?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And they're adjustable. If, if they, you know, go over or whatever, we can adjust those.
Thanks.
Yep, and we can do both at the same time.
Motion to approve the copier purchase-
Second.
And maintenance agreement from Adams Remco.
And we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. See you later.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Rich Sexton. Morning, Rich.
Good morning.
Good. We have an additional appropriation fund, eleven sixty-nine local roads and streets in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Uh, account forty-five forty, equipment other than vehicles. That's the account that this fund would come out of. To purchase pavement, patching hot box to save on cold, cost of cold mix. So what do you got going on here?
This is, uh, carries about four tons of hot mix. Right now, we pay fifty-three dollars a ton for hot mix. We can get it right here out of the, in our backyards. Uh, the cold mix is a hundred and seven fifty. Or, and it, when we're going out patching the roads, doing road cuts, the, the patches are gonna last longer. Road cuts are gonna be smoother.
Yep.
We're not spending twice as much money on the same thing. So it cuts the, we spend about fifty thousand dollars a year in cold mix. And this, this, this would easily cut it in half.
When can you get this?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for, uh, uh, an additional appropriation out of local roads and streets for forty thousand dollars. And this is to purchase a, a pavement patching hot box to save on the cost of cold mix. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an additional appropriation, eleven sixty-nine local roads and streets in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand. Account number twenty-three sixty-two by Tuminus. This is to fund the crack and seal uh, this year of approximately eighty miles of pavement that we'll be doing in the county. Any additional questions or comments of Rich?
Rich, how's the LRS Local Roads and Streets Fund? How's that been trending month to month?
Uh, bringing in the same amount as much deposits or same amount before pre-COVID.
Okay. So just, so the.
It's trending.
We, we were, our guidance from the state at budget time roughly this time was significant reduction.
Correct.
Um, in what we would be receiving monthly for LRS and our local roads and streets and MVH. So now that we've kind of gotten to this point, we probably can see May and June's payments at this point. And so far this year, those payments are now reflective of what they were pre-COVID.
Yes, sir.
So that's what's allowing the additional, potentially allowing the additional appropriation of the fund to do the eighty miles of crack seal. I just, I'm asking because we all know that your two funds are extremely sensitive and been an issue that this board and the council have been working on attempting to get our hands around.
The MVH side, yes, is sensitive because of the split, the fifty-fifty.
And obviously that's the, my question is the light version of what the council's going to be asking on the additional appropriation on the LRS. So I'm sure you've worked with the auditorium to see how that is trending to be able to satisfy those issues.
This would bring up with the eighty miles of crack seal, which is.
It's a lot.
It's a key part to keep in our roads preserved in, in good condition. It'd bring up with the C, two C CMG and the, um, and the subdivision paving. It'd bring a hundred and thirty-eight total miles of preservation paving to the county, which is, you know, about a fifth of, fifth of the entire road network.
Well, and for those that are up, yeah, I mean, the crack seal, people will, well, you know, the crack seal is a very important component on how you get your funding from the state. Cause they want you to crack seal. They want you to preserve the roads. So the law, the more you can show the state that you're maintaining and crack sealing and maintaining these roads, the better off you are to be able to get a CCMG or you're gonna score higher with, because it's all a process that you have to work through. It's complicated, but uh, this type of thing is a, is, is an important function of the funding component from the state. So did I, I think I said that.
Also the cheapest way of preserving the roads.
Right. And.
Maintenance always is.
Yep. It's the basic thing you can do to make roads last a lot longer.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, thanks, Rich.
Next up, uh, Bob Thompson, Development and Stormwater Management. Morning, Bob.
Morning.
Morning, Mike.
Morning.
Okay, um, next up, we have an interlocal agreement between the City of Hobart and Porter County for the reconstruction of County Line Road from one-sixth to Cleveland Avenue. Can you give us an update on what's happening here?
Uh, the City of Hobart is doing a federal aid project. And part of this federal aid project, they have to have, um, an agreement going through for indot approved. Essentially, it's to allow the City of Hobart to come in and purchase right away and do work within the right away that's in Porter County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an interlocal, interlocal agreement between the City of Hobart and Porter County for the reconstruction of County Line Road from US six to Cleveland Avenue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a port, a performance agreement with Lake Shore Development LLC for the Magnolia Metals Subdivision Phase One.
Correct. Mike's been working with Old Top Homes on this particular one, the infrastructure going in and out there. It's a, a performance agreement for the remaining infrastructure for the first phase that they're doing. It's to complete the stormwater up against, uh, the Tower Metal Subdivision to try to alleviate some of the flooding there. So the, uh, performance agreement is for two hundred and seven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an apport, a performance agreement with Lake Shore Development LLC for the Magnolia Metals Subdivision Phase One. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an irrevocable, irrevocable letter of credit extension from DeMott State Bank regarding the Stone Bridge Subdivision. What do you got here, Bob?
Correct. This is, um, Mike, again, is working with the developers of this particular subdivision and trying to get their infrastructure completed on that. So this is, um, Mike has agreed to an extension, correct?
Yes.
On this. And, uh, the performance agreement is for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars on this.
And, and, and what is that, what is that extended? Another year? Another two years? What, how?
Another six months.
Six months?
Six months.
Sorry if you said that. I didn't pick up on it.
That's right. And we go in those small, measured, you know, six-month increments to try to push and to get the.
Get it done. Yeah.
We can allow so many six-months extensions.
So we're basically going through the performance stage where we're trying to get the developer to get everything up to compliance before we accept them and take them over.
Right.
And it's on their dime until they do.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on an irrevocable letter of credit extension from DeMott State Bank regarding the Stone Bridge Subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we got Porter, Porter Business Park. And this is an acceptance of road infrastructure and release of maintenance agreement, what we just talked about.
Correct. This is the opposite.
This is the other side.
Um, here again, the engineering has been working on that. Mike, um, wrote up the engineering report. This should be in the commissioner's agenda items on that where the, where you're accepting the infrastructure.
Yeah, they, they went through, uh, per our, per the UDO, uh, once they reach, uh, final completion of their work, they enter it into a three-year warranty and guarantee period. Uh, that covers any defective work, any work that's found to be incorrectly performed. Um, we completed a final inspection at the end of the, at end of May. Uh, the developer, uh, St. Andrews Development did address a few minor items that we found up upon that final inspection. Uh, so we found that they satisfactorily completed that three-year uh, maintenance period. And we are recommending, um, release of acceptance, final completion, release of the, uh, maintenance bond and issuance of the, uh, certificate of final completion for, for this project.
And wanna note, this is for the Business Park. It's just phases one and two.
Correct.
There's gonna be some additional phases that are coming.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an acceptance of road infrastructure and release of maintenance agreement for the, uh, Porter Business Park. This is for phases one and two. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, St. Andrews Development LLC. This is an acceptance of road infrastructure and release of maintenance agreement as well.
Correct. And this is for the entire residential, um, section. This is, uh, at the north end of the development, I guess, from Porter Business Park. It's, has entrances, excuse me, off of nine hundred north there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for an acceptance of road and infrastructure and release of maintenance agreement for St. Andrews Development LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next up, um, looks like we have some public hearings here. Some rezonings. Uh, first up is a rezoning map amendment. Uh, this is for Brinkacross from RR Rural Residential to P-one Parks and Recreation. And the petitioner is the Porter County Parks Department. And this is first reading. Um, anything you guys need to say at this point before we go into the?
I was gonna ask if you wanted to do the second zoning map amendment too, since it's Hawk Ridge and it's fairly close to this one.
Yeah.
At least for the public input portion.
We can do that.
So we can do the.
Brinkacross and the Hawk, and the Hawk Ridge.
We'll do those together.
Correct.
Right? And then the last one is separate, right?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
Um, okay. The first one mentioned was Brinkacross Gardens. This was, the petition is the Porter County Parks and Recreation. They're requesting a zoning map amendment or rezoning from RR Rural Residential, which is their current zoning, to P-one Parks and Recreation District. This was heard at a public meeting with the Porter County Plan Commission at their six, their June twenty-third meeting and was forwarded to the county commissioners with a five-oh favorable recommendation. The next item with, is, um, Plan Commission Resolution twenty-one dash zero-five. Petitioner, Porter County Parks and Recreation. This is Hawk Ridge, uh, development that they have. This is, um, again, a zoning map amendment where their existing zoning is RR Rural Residential and they're requesting a P-one Parks and Recreation District zoning. This was heard before the Porter County Plan Commission at their June twenty-third meeting and was forwarded to the county commissioners with a five-zero vote and a favorable recommendation.
Got it. So, um, obviously we gotta open up a public hearing. Before we do that, I would like to, uh, just make, uh, a, 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 a quick comment. Um, you know, the, the, the main reason that this is in front of us today, uh, is because of, uh, some housekeeping that wasn't done years ago, uh, when these properties were either donated or taken into the Parks Department. And until we went through, uh, some things with the Zona Wildlife Refuge where we found, uh, that some of these older properties, uh, were never rezoned to parks, uh, for what they truly are, uh, then the Park Department came to us and said, are you guys, we, we, are you guys okay if we bring these things and get them rezoned to what they actually are? We just thought at the time it was a housekeeping thing. Uh, this is coming from the Parks Department. This is not the Development Department or the Porter County Board of Commissioners trying to do this. This is the Parks Department trying to come in and get their property, uh, zoned properly and get it in line with what the conforming use is. So I just wanted to make sure everybody sort of understood how this all happened. Uh, this, this was oversight. I, I, I look at this as basically housekeeping is, is, is how I look at this. Uh, there are no ulterior motives here. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to make that clear as to why this is actually happening. So, um, so with that, we are going to, uh, open up a public hearing and we're gonna, uh, give the three opportunities for people to come forward to speak in favor, uh, of this, uh, rezone. And we're gonna give folks the opportunity, three opportunities to come up and speak against, uh, this, uh, uh, rezoning. And if you do come forward, we want you to come up here, uh, to this microphone right here. Stand there, give your name, your address, your, uh, name, your address.
That's it.
That's it. And, uh, we'll let you go ahead and, and make your comments. And then we'll just ask up another one when that's ready. And we'll just go through the process. So, um, with that, uh, with that, we're gonna suspend the commissioners' meeting. We're gonna open up a public hearing. So now we're in a public hearing. And, uh, what we're going to do is, uh, give anybody in the audience, uh, first call anybody in the audience to come up and speak against this ordinance, this rezone. So, yep, come on forward and, uh, give your name and your address.
I have a handout, if that's okay. I'll have my daughter bring it over in case you'd like to refer to the documents here. Um, my name is Sarah Miller. I am at four-seven-nine East Furnace Road, Michigan City, Indiana. Uh, my grandfather received notification as an adjacent property owner that a parcel of land is petitioning for a change of zoning. I live across the street from his land and I am one property away from Brinkah. He is directly adjacent to Hawk Ridge. So we're very much in the middle. They are close together. Um, my family attended the board meeting or the planning commission meeting for this issue, and it's now been handed to you. During the first process, my family asked a question. And the question is why? Why does the park need this change of zoning from RR to P-one? And the response at that meeting was that it is easier on paperwork if all of the land was owned the same. In essence, housekeeping, what you said. That's what I was given as the reason. We asked, what things did the park want to do with their land that that RR zoning restricted? Because it's been RR zoning for a time. And what does P-one allow for that RR does not? And to paraphrase that, we were told the park will not be doing anything new. They already own the land. And then what they want to do with the land isn't the issue. The issue is just to make everything the same. Again, housekeeping. I was under the impression that zoning changes are to accomplish a purpose, not just to make paperwork easier. The park hasn't been able to give me a definable reason that they want this zoning other than the housekeeping. And it makes me ask, why must we change it now? It's been operating this way. So I have a reason to request that the zoning not change. And if I were you, the commissioners, I would ask, why? Why do you not want this change? So the zoning change to P-one gives the park the right to have a buffer zone to protect it from the properties around it. These protections can limit what a residence already in existence can do on their land. We have been told that the parks are not changing anything at this time and this zoning change will not affect us. But that really is incorrect because of this buffer zone that is then put into effect when they become a P-one park. A zoning change from a residence to a park is a very long-term change. My family has lived on our property for fifty years. Applying short-term reasoning to a long-term issue scares me. As the purpose of zoning is to change or reshape our community, why would we permanently reshape it if we have no strong conviction to do so? It's just paperwork. If the park has the outermost parcels of land as RR and the innermost as P-one, haven't they succeeded in getting what they actually need? This will be a buffer between the park property and residential properties. And the difference in this case is that the park is in complete control of the residential property that abuts it because they own it. It's theirs to do with as they please. The park would then bear the responsibility of being that buffer between itself and the residential community around it. The requested zoning change requires adjacent property owners' families to take on the responsibility of being the park's buffer. And frankly, I don't want that added responsibility. We, as a neighborhood, are asked to be good neighbors to the park. We're asked to clean up trash that blows into our yard from the park visitors. We do this. We aren't particularly happy about it, but unfortunately, as they say, that's the way the cookie crumbles. We have to deal with the general public trespassing on our property, thinking that they're still on park ground. And that happens and we deal with it. One of my neighbors has witnessed drug deals in the parking lot after hours when he walked his dog. He called the sheriff. He did what he was supposed to do. He was a good neighbor. And the park can't control what the general public does, whether they obey the rules or don't. And we understand that. That's logical and reasonable. But it forces us as neighbors to monitor the park and watch out for its good because we live next door. That's now our responsibility. Now we are being asked with this zoning change to limit the use of our adjacent properties. Now, we are being asked with this zoning change to limit the use of our adjacent properties to protect the interests of the park. So, now our property rights are actually being infringed upon. The way things currently are, RR zoning means that the park gets to limit itself to things that benefit the park. I ask that you deny the zoning change. Please think of the long-term effects a small zoning change will have on the many properties that surround it. Does the park really need this change? Or does it want the change just to make paperwork easier? Is that an acceptable reason to limit the property rights of others? Thank you.
Thank you. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone?
I'm Tom Smith. I have property at four seventy-five East Furnace Road. Again, right in that same area. And again, this is, I'm going to be hammering pretty much on the same areas. This property was donated as a park, well, it wasn't totally donated, they had grants and so forth. It was donated, but by doing it the way it was done, it was not brought about by the people close to the park. It was a done deal until after it was done, but it stayed the same zoning. Now, it has been brought back in, and now they want to change zoning. It's sort of a back way of getting this put into process. And again, the question has to be asked, to what advantage does the Park Department need to change the zoning for? If what they're doing has not violated the zoning already, then why can't they keep going with the zoning as it is? And again, it has to do with a variety of things, but the main thing is that we were told at the other meeting that the Parks Department isn't responsible for what happens on their property. They would like to, people to obey the rules, but if they don't, there's really not a whole lot they can do about it. When you're a private property owner and another person's property butts up against yours, and they do something that is egregious, you can go over and talk to that individual. And usually, it's a family or something like that, and you can say, hey, could you watch and make sure your kid isn't throwing baseballs into my property? Or whatever it is. This doesn't happen with the Parks Department. It's like, oh, well, I'm sorry, we didn't want them to throw the garbage over there, but hey, that's what happens. So, anyway, but our main concern is that it does take away value to your property. You cannot build next to a park, your setbacks change. And so, these are things that, you know, it is taking away rights to the individual. And it just seems like lately, the rights of the people have been taken over by the government in great amounts. And this is another thing, the Parks Department is the government, and now they're sitting there saying, okay, we want you to be the buffer. So, again, I ask you that you will consider this, consider the long-term effect of this, and say, is this really necessary to change this? Because zoning, the way I understand it, and I used to be on a zoning commission myself, is that it is for the best purpose, and it's also supposed to be protecting the landowners. And so far, I don't feel a lot of protection. Thank you.
Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, the public hearing is closed. And at this point in time, what I'd like to do is have the attorney from the Parks Board to come forward with Bob Thompson, and I think they can sort of explain what we're doing here and what the process is, since they are the applicant. So, we're going to give them the opportunity to speak as to what we're doing here and why we're here today. So, thank you. David? Good morning.
I'm, as Commissioner Good indicated, I'm Dave Hollenbeck, and I'm the attorney for the Porter County Board of Parks and Recreation. This whole endeavor, as Jeff indicated, was started when the commissioners conveyed to the Park Department the Zona property. And we determined at that time that the property was zoned rural residential and was not being used for that purpose. And there was a consensus at the Park Department that that should trigger us looking at all of our parcels. And what we discovered is what Jeff alluded to, and that's that many of these parcels remained rural residential, and I'll leave to Mr. Thompson to delineate exactly what that, what that means. And so, we embarked upon an effort to downsize the available uses of the property by utilizing the park designation in the zoning ordinance, and it more closely defined and delineated what we were using for the property, both now and into the future. Obviously, if it's zoned rural residential, there'd have to be a lot of things that happen, but you could build a subdivision on that property, and that certainly was not our intent. And to the extent that the zoning should reflect the actual use and the intended use of a piece of property, we came before you in the past already with two other properties, and these are two, and we would intend to line up future properties so that it accurately depicts what it is that we're doing out there. I can address maybe a few of the questions that were raised, if it'd be appropriate.
Yeah, one of the ones that I'm, I keep hearing about this buffer, and I'm not really quite, I think, I'd like to have it explained to me because it, that, I think, for how it's being applied, I don't know if that's the right way, so I'm a little confused on that.
We do have buffer requirements within the zoning, and it's when you come in and actually develop a property on this thing. The residents that are living there are not gonna be required to put in a buffer up against the park. One of the things that we will see is if the park comes in and wants to develop a gazebo or some kind of facility and everything like that, and it's getting in close to one of the adjoining parcels and stuff like that, we are going to make sure that there is a buffer there. And we're gonna make sure that the wooded area and everything like that stays wooded in that situation, and make sure that the facility is set back away.
So, so, so the buffer is from the park property line inward?
Inward.
Well, and let me, let me start with this. If we had a cornfield, and we put a park in.
Correct.
And we zoned it park.
Correct.
And then the surrounding, the rest of this cornfield developed, there would be buffer yards, depending on the use, coming around the park. In the line that I'm saying the development happens, start with a cornfield, put in a park, then residents start going around it. The buffer yard would then potentially be on the residential...
But it's new development.
Correct. Anyway, it's on the person that's doing the development.
Correct.
Not the adjoining property owners.
In this scenario, the residents already exist. This now becomes park. Our buffer yards, even if, in your example, the park comes out to do something, and it would require the buffer yard, all of that buffer yard is on the park property.
Correct.
And the park's responsibility.
Correct.
Correct? At no time are we going to the residents and saying, because the park is putting this up, you need to do this on your property. Correct?
Yeah, it could happen.
Which gets into the other question that came up about setbacks and how this changes the setbacks on these residential parcels that are adjoining the park. No, it does not. If they have a fifteen-foot setback for an accessory structure or a twenty-five-foot setback for a residential home on that from the side property line, they still do it, have that there, even if this gets rezoned to a park. They, none of the uses that they have on, they're allowed in the zoning code under the RR will be taken away from them by rezoning this to a park. They still have all of the same enjoyments that they have under the zoning code with those uses under that use table for rural residential. None of those are taken away.
So, their uses and any requirements that they would have if they were putting another garage or a shed or accessory structure, those all remain the same with the setbacks, and they wouldn't be required to be adding a buffer because they're, they were first in line?
Exactly.
And that's the difference here. The first in line, so whether we're talking about buffer yards or we're talking about wetland restoration, none of that gets to encroach on the private property.
Exactly. Correct.
Let me, let me ask a question, just so, and I think you've already answered it. What restrictions by rezoning this property to park property, what restrictions does that place on the existing property owners out there?
Combining all of these parcels, I, they're not allowed to put in residential homes, obviously. They're not allowed to subdivide it, is that what you mean?
No, I think Commissioner Biggs's question is this. If this gets rezoned park.
Okay.
The existing homeowners.
The existing homeowners.
Do they have any additional restrictions beyond what we've already talked about?
No, I thought, I apologize, I thought you meant by the parks rezoning their land. There are no additional restrictions to put on these residents.
Okay. And a question here. If I'm operating a business in a rural residential zone lot, am I in violation of our codes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The only item that would be considered a business, I guess, that you can do is farming.
Okay. And by zoning, David, I think this is, the whole purpose of this request is to make it consistent with the use. Doesn't really, it doesn't really change anything, other than on paper, it's consistent, and we are no longer in violation of our own ordinances.
Correct.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, one... The only thing I would add is some of the concerns that have been expressed this morning. Already started to try to address some of those. Those are good neighbor type concerns, and they're legitimate. If they're a problem with, we wanna be good neighbors, and we're doing what we can to make sure that happens.
If you could attempt to address a little bit more the concern that was brought up at the plan commission meeting about the garbage and if there's bad actors, what, what would the park want the neighbors to do with that information? Obviously, we're not gonna be telling the neighbors to go pick up the garbage and...
We don't expect them to be our refuge, but...
So, if you could address that, and if there was bad behavior that was happening at the park, what, what are you asking the neighbors to do? So, that they have a clear line?
Two things, I guess. Initially, when they see it occurring, to notify us so that we can put the appropriate actions in place to eliminate or minimize that. And if they don't actually see it happening, if they wake up in the morning and it's there, we do the best we can on a regular basis to police our properties, and we get out there and pick it up. We don't want it on their property any more than we want it on our property, so notification.
So, call the Park Department.
Call the Park Department, let us know. I mean, from what we've heard, we're cognizant now that it may well be a problem. We'll be proactive in trying to get some more receptacles out there for people to put garbage in, and also to police the property as best we can.
And that addresses garbage, but if you see somebody out there you think is dealing drugs, you should probably call the Sheriff's Department.
Probably call the police.
No, our county has decided to take on a lot of these properties that were given and whatever over the years. But what begs to differ is, is that, you know, today's a different world. And, you know, on these small parks and these small little pocket parks and these entities that are out there, you know, I hate to say it, because, you know, I've already had Big Brother thrown in my face once already this morning, but do we start putting cameras up at these places? Because at the end of the day, that's the solution. Right? Because now you can get it on film.
Just like, just like light is the, you get light.
Yeah, but do we want our parks to be that, then are we making it a Big Brother park? I, you know, I think, you know, we're sort of on that fine line here, you know, what, what do we do? But I think this is the challenges that we're faced going forward. But I would like to also point out that you cannot have a park in rural residential zoning. Okay? A park is not allowed in rural residential zoning. It's not a permitted use. So, we're already in violation of our own law. And that's what I said, you know, I'm not, I'm not hiding that. I'm just saying this, all this stuff was done years ago, and we're up here today still cleaning up things that we have found years ago that weren't done right. And we're trying to just take it and turn around and make it right, make it a conforming use as to what the zoning is and what the purpose is. But we have no intention of land grabs, anything like that. That's not what this is about. And I think that, and I'm saying this, I'm on record, it's being recorded. So, I just, I think you have to have a little faith and trust. We're trying to clean some things up. I think you've brought some things to our attention that need further discussion and further resolve. But I think what we're doing here today is simply what we're doing here today. It's nothing more than that. And so, I just wanted to make that, that clear on, as we sit today, we're, we cannot op, you know, we're not supposed to be operating a park on rural residential property, and that's what we're, we're just trying to get it back in line.
I think that's key, on top of the fact that we shouldn't, our Parks Department, we shouldn't have this land as rural residential. You know, you don't want your parks developing subdivisions. That's just not the point, it's not their expertise.
Yep.
It's a park, it should be zoned a park.
Right. It's consistent, the request is consistent with the use. The request does not, does not create any restrictions for the current property owners surrounding it. You know, I think, you know, honestly, folks, I think if you sit here long enough, you see firsts in a lot of things. And this is the first I've ever seen residents concerned about living next door to a park. Usually, they wanna do that, because it keeps a lot of riffraff out of there. You know, many people don't wanna subdivision right next door to them. And the fact remains, if it was, if it stays the zoning that it is, the County Parks Department could sell that property, a developer could buy it and put homes on it. If it's zoned, if it's zoned park, well, yes, sir, yes.
They just got the land through a grant, the grant was difficult on that, and they couldn't have sold it.
Well, we can always get the money back, with the money that we, that we made from selling it. We can always do that. But I just, if, if I, if I was told by our, our plan commission, if this creates any restrictions on you people by doing it, I wouldn't be in favor of it. Because you were there, you were there first. This doesn't do that. I understand your concern, but I think, I think you're gonna, you're going to see, as time goes on, there was, there was really no concern about it. There, it's not. It's just, it doesn't gonna, it's not changing anything. They don't have any grand plan to, to, you know, to build something out there that, that would be offensive to you. And even if they were, that has to go through the plan commission and has to be approved.
And the Park Board.
And the Park Board. Right. So, I get it.
And we can't violate our own zoning.
But I, you're, and I thought, if I thought for a second this infringed on you who were out there first, I wouldn't agree to it, but it doesn't. I hope, I hope you're okay with that. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on first reading for a rezoning map amendment for Brinkacrossing from RR Rural Residential to P one Parks and Recreation, and also Hawks Ridge from RR Residential to P one Parks and Recreation, both being the petitioner of the Porter County Parks Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be at our next commissioners' meeting, which is August tenth at ten AM. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, we have open and award sealed bid. Oh, we got one more rezone, sorry, flipped the switch there. Rezoning map amendment. This is Trail Yard from I one Industrial Light Industrial to CM Moderate Intensity Commercial, Clifford Road LLC. Give us the lowdown here, Bob. Where is this now?
Oh, this is out on Clifford Road. If you would take what I would call Froberg Road or one fifty west, south across one thirty, or Lincoln Way there, and go all the way down, it's basically at the old Harley Davidson dealership.
Oh, okay. The Stroud Property. The Stroud Properties.
It's, it's real close to, and it's adjacent to the Creekside Golf Course.
Okay.
Okay, and it's part of this development.
Yeah, I knew, I knew they were working on that, I didn't know where, where it was, I didn't know who was doing it or the name or anything, so this is it, okay.
So the petitioner is Clifford Road LLC or Trail Yard LLC, they're requesting the I one light industrial district, is there existing zoning, and they're requesting a CM moderate intensity commercial district. The plan commission heard this at their June 23rd meeting and voted five zero to forward this to, as a favorable recommendation to the commissioners.
Okay, so this again will recreate a public hearing, we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, we're going to open up a public hearing, we're going to give, once again, people the opportunity, three opportunities to come forward to speak against this rezone and three opportunities to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone, so first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Public hearing is now closed and we're going to open it up to the board for comments or action.
I'm somewhat familiar with Mr. Clifford's developments and I, I'm in favor of rezoning it for the purposes that he put out, the request.
A motion?
I believe it is.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, this too is on first reading, we have a motion and a second for trail yard from I one light industrial to CM moderate intensity commercial, and this is first reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, now we're open and award sealed bids for community crossing grants 2021, this is for the spring installment, Bob?
Correct, this is the one million dollar award that we received this spring, or that we received the letter at the end of April, beginning of May from NDOT.
Okay. So first bidder is Reeve Riley Construction out of Gary, this is two million eighty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, two million eighty-five thousand seven twenty-eight fifteen. Just, oh, the.
This is a different one.
We only have two, we only have two, right, two, yeah, so and the next one is Milestone Contractors North, their quote is one million nine hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-nine, three, oh wait, one million nine hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, one million nine hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Was the estimate, two million?
Two million.
Looks like we got some good bids.
On this one, we're going to request that we review it here quickly to make sure they're responsible and then award it at the same meeting, because we're under, we're under a deadline with.
Yes, pass and move on to the next one, why, they have a chance to look at it?
So sealed bids for subdivisions paving.
Yeah, so this is for the subdivision paving project. So our first bid is from Reeve Riley Construction, and this is three million two hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, again, this is three million two hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, and this is Milestone Contractors out of Griffith, and they're three million three fifty-six two thirty-seven twelve, three million three fifty-six two thirty-seven twelve.
And the estimate here again was three million?
Three million dollars.
Yep, so what, to get into what, on number 10 on the agenda, the bids for subdivision paving projects, one of the things, as we've been monitoring our eight hundred and sixteen miles of roads that the county takes care of, that is right, eight hundred and sixteen miles of road that we take care of, what is, one of the things that we've noticed over the last four or five years, that we've been so active in, in paving and spending our money paving our main arterials and our main roads, that over the last fifteen, twenty years, our subdivisions in our counties have really been neglected, and so what, this project that we're putting forward here today, we've already been funded from it, from the council, and we're actually using foundation money from our, our Porter County Foundation to, to move this money forward, and we have included in this paving project is county's fourteen worst subdivisions within the county, we have close to three hundred, so as you can tell, we're, we're starting at the worst and we're working ourself up to that, and we're.
All based on grading?
All based on grading, this is not political, it's grading, it's how the conditions of the roads are from a structural engineering, from a ride standpoint, so it's all based off data, and so we're going back into these subdivisions this summer, and we're going to start picking up the, the actual paving in these subdivisions and getting these older subdivisions back up to, to, to par, and you'll be seeing us working on the subdivision paving projects over the next few years, this is something that we really want to get after the next couple of years, so we can get our subdivisions in a little bit better shape, while we're also maintaining. The community crossing grant money that we just talked about before, that road is how the state regulates a lot of that money and they award that money, and that's based off arterial roads, you can only do grind and regrinds and surfaces, you can't do full deplor, reclamation projects, so they, they have a whole analysis that you, you know, gauntlet that you have to go through to, to get the community crossing grants, so, so basically for us this year, with, with the foundation money, the community crossing grants money, we're going to be upwards of five million dollars this year in paving for the county, which is a big year for us, but we, we do know going forward, we want to, we want to start going after more paving and, and being a little more robust, trying to get our roads in better shape for the longer run, so, and when you have eight hundred and sixteen miles of roads, that's on, on, on a very limited budget, it's, 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 it's quite challenging, and, and we know that we need more funds to get this done, and we're working through the county coffers to find that money without going back to the residents and asking for, for more money. And I would also like to add in there that Porter County is one of the few counties that we did not pass the wheel tax, and so, you know, we don't have an additional million, million and a half dollars coming in every year, because we made a decision not to charge a wheel tax, so every you cars that are registered in Porter County, you'd be paying another tax, we're going to try to use this foundation money to go and, and do that type of work rather than coming back to the, to the taxpayers and asking for more money, so we're really starting to see the benefit of this foundation money and how it can work to make our lives a, a little bit better around here, so.
And I think it also ties in nicely with Mr. Sexton's additional request, and that goes back to something he said earlier, with that cracked ceiling and this paving, I think his number was something along the lines of fifth or so of our total road inventory in one way or another is getting touched, whether it's maintained or paved or two inch melon fill or whatever the issue may be, so that's what this board and the council have spent a lot of time in the spring and early summer here trying to figure out where to come up with those funds to be able to address those problems, and it become more and more apparent because of the Paser program and the grading, and we actually have a, we have data points that we're reviewing on quality of the roads.
And also this, also on top of that, we're doing, what is it, Rich, about how many miles of chip and seal this year, too?
We're not, we're not, we're just, we're looking at the projects.
So we're going to pull off the chip and seal, because I know we were doing that pretty, last four years, we did close to three hundred miles, four hundred miles, didn't we? Yeah, so it's a lot going on there, but we need, we needed more funding and this is how we found our way to get, to get there, and it was taking a lot of work between us and the council and talking and, and also the foundation board, and so we're, we're coming out of that good.
You could do the next one.
Next up, we have a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners authorizing the purchase of land from the Dunland School Corporation Board of Trustees pursuant to Indiana Code 36 dash one dash eleven dash eight, and this is basically what we're doing here is, well, I'll let Bob explain it since you're heading up the bridge stuff, so.
This is our Bridge 168 project, it's on Brummitt Road just south of Indian Boundary. We need a small sliver of land from the Brummitt Elementary School and Dunland School Corporation for right of way to complete this project, so this is the process, they've agreed to it, and we're just going through the acquisition process here.
Okay, and when will this, when's this bridge targeted for construction?
It's targeted for, I think, November of this year to start up, I might end up having to go back to NDOT and ask them to, if we could push it back to February or March, just a few months, because we do have another acquisition.
That we may need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the total acquisition in P Central might be point one eight acre.
Yeah, it's, all of these are small.
It's a sliver.
It's, they're slivers.
Yep, probably to add to our right of way and our, our guardrail.
Exactly.
Measurements and, yeah, okay, need the space.
Motion to approve a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners authorizing the purchase of land from the Dunland School Corporation Board of Trustees pursuant to Indiana Code 36 dash one dash one dash eight.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a request from the Morgan Township Fire Department to close 325 South to 400 South on State Road 49 for the Ando Malden Labor Day Parade on Monday, September 6th from 12 to 12:30, the Porter County Sheriff's Department will assist with traffic control, I know they do this every year and we give them, we approve them to do this every year, so the parade's back.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
You guys ready for the CCMG bid award?
We are, so I, I have reviewed the, the bids for the CCMG 2021 dash one project, I have found the bid from Milestone Contractors North Incorporated to be responsive and would find Milestone to be a responsible bidder, their bid was one million nine hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, I would recommend that the board accept that bid and award the contract for this project to Milestone Contractors North Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second with Milestone Construction to be granted the contract for the Porter County CCMG 2021 Spring Project, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
And lastly, just on that, so that's roughly two million, so that, a million of that was from the grants and a million of that is coming from us local, correct?
Correct.
So that's a million dollars of state money that we're utilizing locally.
Correct, right.
Thank you, and on the sealed bids for the subdivision, you want to deal with that at the next commissioners' meeting?
Yeah, we, we will review those and come back to you at the August 10th.
Yeah, there's a lot more in that, the, the community crossing grants is pretty straightforward, the subdivision stuff, we got a lot of things to look at, because I know the engineering department's out gathering data out there too, I think as we speak, or have been, or.
Yeah, with our highway department.
Yeah, so I think we have some time, so let's catch that on the next meeting, good, we got the quotes now, so now we know what we're working with, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys, thank you. Last up, we have Northwest Indiana Now Julie Storbek, and this is a request to use the north, east, northwest and west triangle of the courthouse grounds, Sunday, July 25th from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. for Together We Rise, a rally for reproductive care, there will be music and speakers along with a microphone, there will also be banners and marchers will carry signs that support Joyce. Good morning.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Good, so we have her request in front of us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Northwest Indiana Now for the courthouse as outlined on the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Here's to good weather.
Here's to good weather, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no more rain, any, anybody wishing to address this board?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, come on forward, right here.
Hi.
Morning.
My name's Angie Abiden, I live in Wake Robin Fields, just off Indian Boundary Road in Chesterton, and I was here last month.
You look for, yeah, well, good.
I'm back with the same old problem.
Yeah.
The problem of the Jimmy Andersak alleged farm stand on Indian Boundary Road, and you know, the problem for the neighbors that we all have is that everyone tells us to be patient, that it takes time, that the problem will be fixed, whatever it is, but you know, coming to the board meeting here today was actually very instructive for me, especially listening to the Brinkacross problem, because we have a similar problem with, with Jimmy Andersak, he's been operating this alleged farm stand with food being trucked in from a wholesale producer in, in Illinois by semis, at least twice a week, if not more often, sometimes I see more trucks more often, riding in our subdivisions, which we were talking about the roads, and he's been operating this, this farm stand for a little over a year, started up about the same time as the pandemic, and he hasn't filed the paperwork for the variance, and what worries us in the neighborhood is that at some time, as Mr. Hollenbeck said, the zoning should reflect the actual use and intended use, so at what point in time does this farm stand that's operating there illegally suddenly become the reflected actual use and intended use? We're worried about him being grandfathered in is essentially the problem, and that's, and last, about two weeks ago, Suzie and I went to the violation call for the plan commission, and the only reason Jimmy Andersak showed up there is because he was subpoenaed to show up, and he asked for a continuance and he got two months because his attorney couldn't show up, he has an attorney now, but that has nothing to do with the zoning variance, which nobody seems to be filing the paperwork, and there doesn't seem to be a mechanism to get him to do it because there's no consequences, there's no accountability, and then we still have the problem with the, the semi trucks that are driving in Wake Robin and Graham Woods, I understand that the highway department is going to be putting up a barrier between Jimmy Andersak's property and Starwood in Graham Woods, so that'll keep these semis from coming from that property into Graham Woods, but it doesn't keep them from Wake Robin where I live, and plus, I had a neighbor that told me she saw the trucks down at the school system turning around in their parking lot, these trucks are all over the place, I guess what we don't understand is why the county can't send Jack Tuchton.com, the wholesale producer on the south side of Chicago, a cease and desist letter to let him know what our rules are as far as semis driving in our neighborhoods and our, our The, the other thing that bothers us is after the, the violation call, we, Suzie and I had a conversation with Joe Lar, who told us what we call the Jimmy Andersak spin story, which is he's been operating out of that house for 20 years, which is a lie, that farm stand has not been up for 20 years, it's only been a little over a year, and, but somehow like somebody is trying to lay the groundwork to shoehorn him into getting spot zoning in a residential neighborhood for his alleged farm stand, which isn't a farm stand at all, and so I just wanted to continue to share with you the concerns that we have in the neighborhood that nothing seems to be happening, nothing seems to be resolved, and we're worried that the longer this goes on, the worse the problem is going to be for us, and that suddenly it will become a housekeeping matter that the zoning has to be changed in favor of Jimmy it will become a housekeeping matter that the zoning has to be changed in favor of Jimmy Andershak. So that's where we're at.
So where we're at is that after the complaint, we have them go, the violation call is actually the first hearing for the unsafe building hearing, so it's already been that process. There is no way to grandfather yourself into zoning when you're violating the underlying zoning. No, we don't have the authority to reach over state line or into private business and tell them to stop selling or not delivering. Um, the actual issue is with the property owner. Uh, we can't force him and I'm not sure we want him to request a use variance to allow the, uh, fruit stand here. Uh, the process for him to be forced to stop is the unsafe building process and that's underway. His option to try to remedy the situation and bring himself into compliance is to request a use variance or a rezone. That process would include either, either or would require all the surrounding property owners to be notified, have a public meeting at the plan commission for a rezone, have a public meeting here at the commissioners for a rezone. If it's for a use variance, that would be a public hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, if he requests it, that's his opportunity to attempt to convince the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow the use where it is. If they didn't allow it, we would be still back at the unsafe building process. The unsafe building process is not going to cease, uh, until he is either compliant with the zoning code or he receives some sort of approval to allow him to do what he's doing. Again, he hasn't filed that. Um, that request as of this point, if he does, the surrounding property owners would be notified and that hearing would progress as if anyone else requested use variance on a piece of property. And then that board would make the decision of whether it fits the requirements or not after public input. But at this point in time, it's before the unsafe building, it's in the unsafe building process, we've had the first hearing. Um, he requested a continuance, he received it, uh, but when we come back for that follow-up unsafe building hearing, uh, we will progress on the way we started, which is that he needs to bring his property into compliance and right now his yard and the way he's, our allegations are, the way his yard is and the way the materials are being stored, he's an open and notorious, uh, um, public nuisance at this point. So, uh, we are in agreement with the neighbors as far as the use being not correct and the process is underway to stop it. The unsafe building process is the quickest process we have available to bring it to bear. His other options as far as rezone and use variances are his options to attempt to bring himself into compliance. And again, those boards would have to make the decision of whether or not he fits those requirements. So, uh, this is underway and we will have a conclusion here, probably we'll have an update here and within sixty days at the next, and I'm assuming they got set in the September, uh, unsafe building.
August twenty-sixth, I think was the date.
August twenty-sixth, uh, unsafe building hearing and we will progress there and continue to be requesting that the hearing officer, uh, allow, order them to order him into compliance or allow us to enter and to bring him into compliance at his own cost.
How did they come up with two months for the continuance due? So curiosity is kind of official to them.
It was, it was the beginning of July and they got continued to August, which is the next hearing date.
We, you know, we get a lot of this up here, you know, earlier today, we sat down and and we had people up here publicly comment that we're overreaching, that we overreach and that we try to take people's property and we try to do things. Here's a perfect example where this gentleman has all the property rights within the state of Indiana and he he has a pretty wide berth of how he can operate and all the systems that work in it. And my whole point is of of saying this is that Indiana is a state of property rights and the property rights follow the owner of the property. So, you know, I think it's funny in this this, in in the time we've been here, we've been accused of overreaching and now we're being accused of not doing enough to make someone change, uh, how they're behaving. And so it's it's quite a fine line that we have to work through, but it is the law and by him now in unsafe building funds or unsafe building, he is now in the march, starting to go through and go forward to have his day, uh, to make this happen. Unfortunately, it takes time. It's it's frustrating to us up here as well. Trust me, um, because we don't like to see people in our community being taken advantage of this way, which I feel that's what's happening here.
Or our roads.
Or our roads, or we have things too that we need to protect out there. So, um, we're on it and we're we're going to get to the bottom of this and, uh, the sooner the better.
And and to be clear on the property rights issue, it's not that he has the right to do what he's doing. We are obviously on the position that he doesn't have the right to do what he's doing. But the property rights create, uh, the due process portion, which is you get notice, you have a, you know, your first hearing in front of the hearing officer. Is it abnormal to say I didn't have enough time to hire an attorney in two or three weeks? It's not abnormal. Is the continuance time abnormal? It's it's not. And again, it's not because we believe he has the right to do what he's doing. I think the comment's better taken as because Indiana has these property rights, there is a due process portion that goes through it. It doesn't mean that we will not get to the point where we want to get to and we, and the hardest part of that is getting it started, which this has already been started, we've already had that first hearing, he's completely on notice and now we're on that march to rectify the circumstance or have him attempt to rezone or to get a use variance. But again, the surrounding property owners will be protected because they're all going to, the immediate adjacent property owners are going to be notified if that were actually to be filed.
Is the unsafe building process, is there a a process for public comment or does that only come before you and the board?
Yeah, no, the the public, there isn't a public process at the unsafe, because that is, it's a, it's a judi, it's a judicial, it's a judicial process. Board of Zoning Appeals is a semi judicial board. The hearing officer, uh, is sitting in as a judicial officer at that point hearing this, so it's a, it's more akin to a courtroom atmosphere, it just happens to be a process that's veiled to municipalities that allows us to address this in a, imagine this, a faster way than what the court system would be like.
No, I believe it. Okey-dokey, thank you.
Thank you for coming up and reminding us and we'll keep on it. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come before this board? And with that, this board stands in recess.